Doing pretty good.
Don't sit down.
Okay.
Please do one more question. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have approved of the amendments on June 27, 2011, July 5, 2011, regular meeting.
I move. I'll say.
All those in favor of approving amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yes, have it. Public comments. Go ahead, Mr. Plonk.
Hey.
I'll never do that.
Can I give the board members something to go by?
Yes.
Okay, this is nothing new. You saw this back in May when this issue first came up. And as we, uh...
Thanks, Ms.
Uh, when we first brought this up, I spoke to Mr. Roach and Ms. Lucas back in May. Came to the board members, Board of Education meeting, and was approved that our contract would go with 11 months, 220 days. Copy of the contract is in the right side of your packet. Uh, the next meeting, those amendments were approved. And then yesterday, we find out that is, uh, let's see. Jay, where is saying to amend administratively correct something, that there's no correction needed. There's a contract that was employed, it was by Board of Education, it was approved. So I don't understand why this is on here or, uh, why it even exists. So my concern basically is that it should stand as it was approved in May, May 16th, that our contract should be 11 months, 220 days. A normal teacher contract in this state is 200 days. A JRTC contract to equal 200 days, to equal 200 days is 10 months. So when you start going up, 20 days is a month. For the last five years, we've worked 220 days and got 10 months' pay. So I got with Mr. Roach this spring, with Sid, I don't know his last name. We went through the whole process, explanation, Ms. Lucas, you were in there at the end of it. And we went through the whole process, explained it to Mr. Roach, and he agreed and understood. He brought to the board and got it fixed. And most of the counties around here, Campbell County is 220 days, 11 months. Wayne County has six instructors, all three schools, they're 240 days, point of 12 months. Not interested in that. I like my summer. Okay? But basically what that does is compensate us for, our job starts at 3:35, 3:40 every day after school. Because we have about six different teams that we coach. From Raider Teams to Drill Teams, ones that we took to Nationals this year in Florida, to Marchmanship, a lot of things that we do that you don't have visibility of. But we have kids involved four or five days a week till April, May timeframe. And that's what the difference is, is all that extra time that we're putting in. Okay? Uh, yes, sir.
Let me ask you a question. How many days do you work?
This year, I think I worked 237.
Okay, well, going back there a few minutes, I thought you said that you wanted to, you didn't want to work 240 days, you wanted to work 220 days. Explain, I'm confused.
Okay, a normal teacher contract is 200 days.
Right.
That's 10 months for an Army instructor. Okay? It's called Army and county talk different months. County talks months, county talk days, because you have 261 days in a year, 12, 13 months, or something like that.
Well, so the teacher works 200 days and that's 10 months. So you're saying yours is the same then?
No, because it could be. It'd be a 10-month contract.
A teacher works 200 days and that's 10 months.
And we're working 220 days by, for the last five years, so that's why we got with Mr. Roach and fixed it to 11 months.
So it's supposed to be 11 months and 220 days?
Yes, sir. And like in Wayne County, they're 240 days, 12 months. And then there's some places, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm, you're not interested in 240?
No, ma'am.
12 months.
No, you're, you're interested in 220 days.
220, 11 months, just like you guys approved.
Well, I, but I thought you said that's all what you were.
Well, but it was 10 months' pay instead of 11 months' pay, sir.
He was working too bad, but he wasn't getting paid.
We were working 20 extra days without pay.
The 220 days in my mind is an 11-month contract.
I agree with you.
Okay. That's where I'm getting totally confused. And, you know, on the agenda, it says 11 months, 240 days, because I think 240 days is a 12-month contract.
I agree with you.
Everybody in the states agrees with that.
He said he worked 220 days, but he wasn't on it. He was only getting paid.
We were on a 10-month contract.
He was only on a 10-month contract. And he paid for 200.
Yeah, but how many days was he getting paid for? 200?
Two, 200. We were working, my pay is based on calendars with the Army. 10 months is 10 months. 10 months is 200 full days, to compare those two. So if the county told me we worked 300 days, darn it, and 10 months, still 10 months, 300 days. So, but we, but what we were doing was 220 days, and we're getting 10 months reimbursement from the Army.
So you were working, basically, you were working 220, maybe 235 days or whatever. It's arbitrary. But you were only getting paid for 200?
200 days.
Yes, 10 months.
Right, and that was last year.
But he made.
That was last five years.
Right, last five years.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, but what you were requesting, that's what Mr. Roach, the last time that we approved, we approved this before the amendment, or before it came on the agenda, we approved 11 months and 220 days.
Yes, and that's what we sent to the Army for reimbursement.
Okay. But that's not what's on the agenda.
That's not what's on the agenda. But we can go and, we can discuss that, if you want to.
So I'm, I'm still a little bit confused. So this past year, you got paid for 200 days?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you agreed with Mr. Roach, May the 16th, to increase that to 220 days?
11 months, yes, ma'am.
11 months. Um, something that bothers me is, is we called surrounding counties to see what they got paid, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
That's how you came up with wanting an extra?
No, ma'am, it's always been that way. We just hadn't figured out how to fix it. I got with Sid back in January, and he had coached me on how to fix this, and addressed it through the Board of Education process, you board members, and that's how we got to this. It took six months to fix this.
Well, I'll tell you something, and we could take this information, and we could actually discuss it, we could get into this in session, and say, "Sir."
I think we do need to discuss it, because, I mean, if we're going to base everyone's pay on surrounding counties, we've got teachers and personnel, central office personnel, who were, had days taken away from them, what, three years back? And we've never given that back to them. And if we compare them to other counties, I'm sure we're going to come up on the low end for all those people. Go ahead, go ahead.
Eric, I'm, I'm sorry.
Ah, I'm sorry, I told him he could, he wanted to ask the question.
Just go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, all I was going to say is, air pay, I mean, you're a Board of Education employee. We're not hired by the Army, we're hired by you. And we work for you, and you pay us. All the Army does is reimburse half of that pay back. And it's based on a month's pay. So it's just like a teacher's pay for 10 months, if you take our monthly pay and figure that up by a month for 10 months, then divide that by 200 days, you've got that, that annual salary, just like you figured a regular teacher. But we're, we have been forced to work 220 days and only get paid that 10-month pay. And that's, we're trying to get that back online, if we're to get straight.
So it was online at one time, is that what you're suggesting?
Oh, it never has been.
Never happened.
Sort of, I think I understand, I'm, I think I understand what you're saying.
I'm basing it, I'm, I'm.
Good, do you have, do you have anything else?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Plonk. We have someone else, I believe, who signed in, to speak public comments?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Hager.
Ms. Hager. I'm sorry, I don't have the sheet in front of me, I just looked at it.
Uh, I'm all Hager, and it's about the, uh, the old middle school out there that right now the fire department has it, and I understand they're wanting to get it back. We have a group that is interested in doing something with this, and trying to do something that will help the community, that will provide space for several things that's needed in the community. We need time to see how the cost could be to update it, to put the new roof on it, which Dana was supposed to give us a price on what the roof would cost. And then also clean it up, which I understand there's a lot of old in it, so we're trying to, we wanted to look at it and see what needed, what needed to be done. There's several groups around with, I was at the FRA meeting today, and there's several groups that need space to, not big spaces, but space that they could, they could use. And there's no, no buildings around Grand Hamlin that wants to, that you have the space for, too expensive for it. So what I'm asking, and I understand that maybe the fire department's saying now, if they want to get it back, now they want to say, "We want to keep it, because we want to do a grant," and I think they've had enough time to do a grant, if they were going to do one. But I'd like to, if we make any decisions, who gets it, I'd like to give the group time to look at it and see what the cost could be, and see if we could, we could work with that for the community. So, that's all we want, is to take time. I didn't know if we could give it back, what decision we were going to make, but we wanted to have time to, to look at this, to see.
Thank you, Ms. Hager. I think Steve and I talked earlier, and we were kind of discussing what the Hamlin Volunteer Fire Department, what they were going to do. And I don't think it's real clear on what they want to do yet. I think Steve has, Steve has some information he wants to share with us. And then after we, I think, discuss that, and kind of weigh out what they're going to do, and figure out what the plan is, before we commit to anything, I think.
Yeah, I didn't want to commit tonight, because we haven't studied it that much.
Right.
But I think with the grants and things that we think are possible, I think we could do something with it, and the community needs some things in there. I know Pharaohsburg has different, all different building people in that, and we were hoping that we could do the same thing for people in the community that would be useful, which is not now.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Hager.
Okay, is it possible that we can have, Chris, to contact the Hamlin Volunteer Fire Department, have someone come and talk to us? Because we, you know, we've kind of heard this secondhand, that they're planning on demolishing the building, and this, I mean, and as, you know, I was able to get a copy of the deed the other day, when it was given to them, it says, "When it ceases to be useful for community purposes, it goes back to the board." But no one has ever communicated that to us, and I think Craig just happened to be out there one day and heard secondhand that that's their, was their plan. Could we ask him to come, or them to come, and just tell us what their plans are, maybe we'd know better to address what they want to do, maybe what all I'm saying. But we might, we might, we could, yeah, please?
Make it okay for this, so we can contact.
That's great. Did you, did you talk to them last week, Chris?
I did not. I did, bring him in.
What did?
I called the fire chief, and I asked him, and he told me that they were, they had gotten a grant to demolish the building, get a $50,000 grant.
$50,000?
$50,000. And that they also wanted to get another grant to build a new fire department. Dana and I both talked to him and cautioned him about the building has asbestos in it, and it was very costly to remove that, that we weren't sure $50,000 would be enough, but again, we just left it at that. Because he came in and told me that they wanted to give the building back to the board. And then when I, and I asked him to give it to us in writing, that was a few months ago, and I asked him to give that to us, to us in writing, and I never did hear from him, so I called him last week, and that's when he told me that they'd had a change of plans. So he's contacted a couple of companies about actually demolishing the building, and they've been in to speak to us about what's in the building.
I've listened.
It's a health hazard. Dana wore a respirator to go inside to take samples of asbestos, but he did not send those off for testing, because there's no need for the board to bear that expense when they may not get it back, so I just hailed up one man.
I'd like to see if, maybe we could contact him and have him come talk to us. I think that would be a lucky next move, and that would be a wise, wise move. Anybody else have anything? Is there anyone else who signed in for public comments? Uh, we have a present, we have two presentations. And Ms., I know that Dr. D. Cockrell is here, and Steve Fields is here. Ms. Cockrell, if...
Jack, you're playing like you're next.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Steve, it'll be all right, if you, I know that you're not filming.
Good evening, members of the board, Ms. Lucas. I'm Steve Fields, I'm your clerk at the Hartz Project. And Ms. Lucas and Mr. Midcap have been attending our construction meetings on site, and she asked if I'd come by and give you a progress update, her staff's report, and maybe answer a few questions that you may have. So, again, I'll begin with what's currently going on. So, currently, we've got nine contractors on site, and this fluctuates depending on what state and the progress we are in, but that's the most that we have had. The masonry and block work, brick work, has all been completed at this time. And if you've been by, you may have noticed they've been cleaning the brick, and it's looking quite nice, I believe. Uh, there is one small brick and block building remaining at the wastewater treatment facility that's located over the hill, kind of behind the cemetery. And, again, the general contractor is Radford, and they're out in Beckley, and they're the ones that's doing a lot of the general work, of course. They're currently installing drywall, and they're 95% complete with that. Also, ceramic floor tiles being placed in the restrooms at this time. And, again, the administration areas is being completed with all the drywall as well. Painting is well along, the block filler coats, finished coats are on, they're beginning to apply the second, final coat in some areas now. Uh, the ceiling grid's 90% complete, you know, again, they haven't dropped in ceiling pads, or they have not begun on your vinyl floor, because due to the conditions in the building with the humidity and so on, they're going to have to get better control with the interior temperature, and, again, we've got a little bit of sweating on them, which, again, with this kind of weather, it's kind of typical, but, but, again, they're holding off on floor tile. Uh, the windows and exterior storefront doors are 90% complete as well. They're working on the main entry area. Today, they started putting in their metal curtain wall framework. And, again, there is a lot going on, and it needs to be at this stage of the project, obviously. Dottery is our plumbing and heating and air conditioning contractor. They set the last rooftop units on the two-story section, which is the west side toward Hamlin, just last week. And so that's the last rooftop units. Uh, we received permanent power today from AEP, just finalized that this afternoon, which is good, because now they can test the rooftop units and so on. That's a big step forward. Plumbing fixtures are scheduled begin the 1st of August, as well, through the plumbing contractor. Jordan Smith is our electrical contractor, and they're a prime as well. Currently, they're pulling all the wiring through the building, they've completed everywhere but the two-story section, and that's wiring, that's fiber optic, lighting, power, control wiring, security cameras, et cetera. So they're well along, and, again, probably 90% complete on that as well. Uh, they're terminating all their wiring to their electrical panels in their multiple electrical rooms, and, again, we did finish completion of the permanent power to that. And now on the exterior of the building, Radford has begun their sidewalks on the north side of the building, which is toward the Guyan Dock River, away from Route 10, you really can't see it, but they're on that side now, on exterior sidewalks. Uh, they set the wastewater treatment plant yesterday. That's a big package unit, 32 foot long, 10 foot high and 8 foot wide, and that takes care of all your sanitary in a package deal. So they set it on the foundation yesterday. That's another big step forward. Uh, there's still a lot of fencing work that remains, you know, around the cemetery, around the playground area, and a protective fence around the wastewater treatment. Now, the school has us looking into some additional fencing at the back of the building along the riverside, of course, a chain link fence. So today, with Ms. Dingus and Dana, we looked at that, as well as a section of fence along Route 10. It's a two-story section, because that's close proximity to Route 10, so they feel there's a need there as well. So today, we put together a little package, and we'll let the general contractor give us a price for that, a price proposal. Again, we're shooting, or the contractor's shooting for a, for a completion date at the end of September. And in my personal opinion, they're on track to do that, since they have stepped up the pace recently. But I must add that they have requested a weather delay extension through the architect, that they claimed, again, multiple rain days and so on. Uh, we have not granted that. CMM has it, and the SBA as well, that's not granted that. So, again, they wanted every day it was below 32 degrees, and every day a rain, which is ridiculous. But, again, the contractor's superintendent says, "Steve, I really don't feel we need that," but that's kind of a buffer. But, but, again, that has not been granted to them, and, again, we're shooting for that end of September date. That's pretty much everything that I have, but is there any questions that I can possibly answer?
Anybody have any questions?
Have you, have you had any ventless or anything?
Well, to a small degree, we have, but we believe it's younger kids, because basically they're still on extension cords, and maybe some welding leads, which is all copper, but yet they're leaving, uh, big-sized copper piping, and they're leaving that stuff laid. So we've been lucky, we really have, because of security, there's not much security. But, no, at this point, nothing major, and we're hoping that we don't have that. I know at Point Pleasant High School, the, the job was almost over, and they went in there and just tore up all kinds of stuff. So, again, we're hoping we don't have that problem here.
Thank you, Mr. Fields.
Okay, and, again, we're hoping you all come by the job site when you get your opportunity there. It's going to be a nice school.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Fields. Thank you very much. Dr. D. Cockrell?
Okay. I thought the agenda was going to be switched on over. I'm sorry. Well, good evening, Superintendent Lucas and the members of the Board of Education. With so many new board members throughout Region 2, I decided to put together a little PowerPoint for you, because I'm a visual learner, I'm just thinking that other people might be too. What happens is every year, we do an annual update. Mine's a little later this year, because I decided to wait until the end of school to give you any big scoops that may have occurred during the year. Although we do have two members, Mrs. Smith and the superintendent, are on our regional council, so if there was something that was just major, of course, they would relay that to you. But I thought I'd show you a PowerPoint today, and for those of you who are new, find out a little bit about what it is we do at RISA. My left-hand person is Mr. Midcap, so if anything goes amiss, he's going to help me get that. One of the things about our reports, we do turn in on December every year, it's a year, it's the year before. So what you're going to see is data from the year before. We have six areas of service by statute, and a lot of folks really don't know that. A major component of the work that we do is technical assistance to low-performing schools and school systems, high-quality targeted professional development. And for those of you who work in Lincoln County, we work steadfastly this year with your curriculum team on three different areas, the questioning cadre, professional learning communities, and also depth of knowledge. We also facilitate cooperation among county boards on a variety of issues, and one of the most significant pieces is the Food Service Cooperative, and your county participates exceptionally well. We also do computer repair, and you all know that computer repair is just a central issue in Lincoln County. We have a wonderful working relationship with your staff, it's a privilege to work here, and we do a lot of work here. Last year, we did 7,000 work orders in, in our region, and a lot of those were in, 2,000 of them were in Lincoln County. Receiving and administering grants is also on the statute, and we currently have seven grants, whether they're national, federal grants, or state, local, and we do have some foundation grants. And then developing other programs, we have lots of other programs, and I'll show you a few things, although I'm not going to take a long time to them. Our regional council, which, again, we have two members from your Board of Education, consists of these folks. We are expanding that regional council, we'll probably have some additional higher ed folks this year, because we are intent upon expanding our career and technical piece that we're doing at RISA 2. We are submitting an I-3 grant, and so we will be including the two community and technical colleges in our region. And, of course, we have a partnership and a building together over here, and we are also working with Southern. Some of our specialized programs, instead of just talking about what we are doing, some of our specialized programs, I've decided to focus on energy management, and, of course, Joe Parsons always gives you an update. Usually, it seems I'm here when Joe Parsons is here, and he's great to work with, and we hope that's making a difference there. I can see the statistics, so I know that it is. We have a youth violence prevention program, actually, in one of our counties, and they're working steadfastly with three or four schools, and I think it's a good program, we may expand that and look for a grant in that area. We do have supplemental services, and we are serving some of your schools with that. We have special tutoring and intervention projects, which is in addition to, separate from those supplemental services. And we also work with the West Virginia Tech Consortium, it's a very active consortium. You all are part of another consortium, so, we have three counties in that, Mason, Campbell, and Wayne, but you are serving, yours are being served by Southern, and that's another reason we're including them on our regional council. We have a new wellness specialist, we just submitted a grant, teen pregnancy grant, because we know that our three Southern counties have an extraordinary number of teen pregnancies, and we're trying to address that. And we also began a bullying task force this year with representation from your county also. Here are some of the other specialized programs that we had this year. You can see there are some that are by statute, others are brand-new programs, online technology integration, integration program is a new one. We do have a leadership cohort, and we now have two cohorts there. That means folks who are funneling into the principalship, and there's 36 people in each one of those cohorts. So we hope we're getting a good quality of folks to run your schools. More specialized programs, we're busy people. Obviously, you know we do support the county billing. Um, we also do math, reading language arts, principal, and instructional coaching. We have 15 people that are on our consultant list that we use in your schools. We try to use the same coaches in the same schools year after year for that continuity and rapport, and that's a fairly new adventure that we've started three years ago. We have a national board certification grant, I think we had at least two teachers from Lincoln County the last two years, I'm not sure, Jeff, it was one last year and one the year before. Uh, we have a Teaching American History grant, the folks in your county are participating and are developing what they call traveling trunks, I'll show you a picture in a minute, that represents, represents your county and the history of your county. These trunks will travel all over the United States. Lincoln County will be represented all over the United States. We also have a statewide grant for alternative certification. We've graduated 18 chemistry teachers in the last year. Our physics and our English cohorts begin in August, so for those of you across the state, not just Lincoln County, who have a deficit in these areas, we now have cohorts in place. Some of our other services, you can see, Principal of the Year recognition, Teacher of the Year, we had a Lincoln County folks, a Lincoln County exemplary teacher this year, and we also had the Principal of the Year from Lincoln County. This year, we have principal cafes, which were four half-day sessions that involved the principals to talk about issues that revolve around school improvement, that was well-attended by your Lincoln County principals. And these are some of the other things that we provide at our site. Now, these are not at your site, most of our work is at your site, but these are actually at the RISA office. Okay, here are some other services. Teacher as assessment leader is one that's always well-attended by your teachers. Those are online courses, too, that they can take. We have consortia, and we're the only RISA in the state with consortia that meets regularly. Our staff development directors, we have a math-science consortium that involves all of your math and science peoples from the entire region, Southern region, so you have university professors. And, and these folks get together to plan and strategize with your teachers and your administrators. That usually happens three times a semester. We also have technical assistance to low-performing schools, and you know that we worked in three rural schools this year fairly diligently. And these are some of the things that we do. We have a very extensive list of things that we do, but we do diagnostic, ongoing analyses, and we're really focusing on the rigor of the coursework and the relationships for the coming year. We know that those relationships that are established in those schools are the critical variable to success for students. and we're really focusing on the rigor of the coursework and the relationships for the coming year. We know that those relationships that are established in those schools are the critical variable to success for students. And honestly, when you go in school systems, you find that missing sometimes. Here are some new initiatives. This year, we implemented a teacher studio. We have some of your teachers participating. We are using this in a variety of ways. We have five forums on best practices across the region, and these are teachers from all of our counties collaborating together. They can even do visuals if they want to. We also have a quality questioning cadre, and these folks are working together on best practices. Next year, because we bought flip cameras for folks in your schools, these folks will be able to videotape their best practices that they're practicing, upload it to Teacher Studio, and then Kelly and Lisa and I can take a look at that and give them feedback. And we, again, we're submitting an I-3 grant that's called Reading Rural Students for Careers in College, and Lincoln County is on board. And here are some of the new initiatives that I've spoken about. This year, one of the things that is also new is that we recognized exemplary students. And we had a pile of nominations that were really, really inspiring. We actually work all across the country. RISA Two is pretty involved, so here are some of the things that we're doing across the country, actually. And one of the greatest things, and I think Mrs. Smith, and when Mr. Raj was here, I sort of gave a testimonial. Somehow, I became a member of the College Board's Superintendent's Advisory Council, and there are superintendents from all across the country who are participating, twenty-two superintendents, and I have honestly learned so much from that to share with our counties. We are working hard next year, a focus that goes along with the West Virginia Department's initiatives on personalized learning. We are also working on personalized student environments. So in the schools in which we are working, we will be emphasizing all of these things. We recently hired a technology services director who will be working in your schools to ensure or support your technology folks so that instruction is centered on student engagement. Oh, and I just thought I'd show you a couple pictures. This is kind of fuzzy, but we worked at Kermit K.A. We know that's not a Lincoln County school, but this is generic. And I have never worked in an environment, and it's something for all of us to think about, where folks work so hard for Westhes Prep. I mean, it's a culture issue. We were working on culture at Kermit, and the teachers took it to new heights. And I will tell you, it was an inspiring set of circumstances that we probably ought to translate to many of our schools. We work in the community. Here's our smiling RISA folks. And this is a math PLC at Point Pleasant Junior Senior High. You can see, I took that picture on St. Patrick's Day. They were really getting into it, but it's one of the PLCs that I personally worked in that was very inspiring, and they did a great job. And that little gal there, she's probably just a visitor, but that guy. Of course, Danny's not here, but I love Promethean boards, and we now have six people in the region that are certified, can't be certified to show folks how to do this. One of the reasons I love Promethean is that it actually has all of the Marzano strategies embedded in the software on the board, so it's... We do have certified trainers. Well, now, here's some county folks, but I know you'll be totally appreciative of it. We do install computer labs, and these little guys at Dingus Elementary are really grateful for their new computer lab. Some more teachers. Phil is the vice chair of the regional council. We have lots of National Board teachers. We have a grant from Benita, and we normally have about twenty-five teachers that go through our grant. And we provide daily support and a mentor to ensure that they are successful when they turn in their work, which is really quite an elaborate process. This, again, is the Teaching American History Project, the traveling trunks. I don't know if there are any Lincoln County people in there. We have a Lincoln County cadre, and they have established a trunk. We'll take pictures of that and send it to you. That, again, will travel around the country. Working on the trunks. Another thing that they do this year, they travel to Philadelphia where they worked on primary resources to give to your students in their classrooms. We do have a new math grant, and Lincoln County is participating. This year, it is focusing on content and instructional strategies for the elementary And I know these little smiling people, you might not know except for one. One of the things that we really do is to try to build relationships with our counties. It's a wonderful relationship that we have with Lincoln County, and we work hard to create that independence because we are your support system. Now, this is a group of folks from Mingo and Logan County. Nine of us went to China last year on spring break, not on state funds, I'm already privately paid, but it is building those relationships. And one of the things that they did was to look at the Chinese language program while we were over there. So our relationship building is really paramount to what we do in RISA Two. We hope that we serve your needs, but we know that you will tell us if we are not. Do you want any questions for me?
I would like to say that Dee is very helpful, very supportive of our schools, all of our schools. Anything that we need, they are right there. And I'm just pleased that we have that kind of relationship with RISA.
Well, it's an honor to work with you all, and your schools are working so hard. And if there's anything that we can do to serve you, you know that we will figure out a way to find the right person to do it.
If any of you get a chance to go to one of the RISA meetings, I think you'll really find it surprising because you hear Lincoln County mentioned a great deal, and it's all positive. It's not this negative stuff that we hear all the time. It's all positive, and we have such a good relationship with them, and I enjoy those meetings so much. It's really an honor to be there with you guys.
Well, it is our honor, and I have a list. The regional council members received a comprehensive list of every service that we provided in every county in March. But this is just Lincoln County's teased out, so you can go in there and say on, you know, December first, these are all the activities that we get in your school. So it's a day-by-day account of what we have done in Lincoln County over the last year. Okay? Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next on our list is Dr. Jack Clennett.
Well, good evening. It's funny standing up and talking and the board, but let me, maybe I'll stand, might be easier. If you don't mind. Let me just thank Dee. You don't know what a jewel you have here. You need to use her as much as you can. And Carol, you know she's... I deal with eight Rises. They do what they do. She was showing you, many of them do, on three-point-nine million dollars for eight Rises. So you can see how much money they have, and it seems like a lot of money, but when you... Her staff is very, very small, but the work they do is tremendous. Use her. Use her, use that RISA because they are one of our best in the state. They do good work. Reason I came by this evening, it was kind of an invitation from your superintendent. I was talking to her Tuesday at your meeting with your principals and central office, and it was a good meeting. And I knew you were having, the board was having a meeting last Wednesday on the OEP A audit. And I said, "Trish, do you, or Superintendent Lucas, do you want me to come by and at least explain to the board if they might have questions what the state board is saying?" So I'm going to be honest and explain exactly what I felt the board was saying to you as a board. First of all, they don't want Lincoln County back. I can tell you, they want you to be in control of the system, and you are, and that's the way it should be. I have kind of a special place, and I've worked a lot with Lincoln County over the last X number of years, and so it's kind of been down here a lot, and I've enjoyed it. And I met good people, and people interested in kids, and so this is kind of a special county for me because I spent more time here than I've spent a lot of places. But what the board, let me just explain the structure of our board and OEP A, so you'll know. I know, Carol, you may know this, so you can turn it off if you... But basically, OEP A is an arm of the state board. They are the auditing arm. They are the ones, if there is an issue or issues that come out in a county or a school, the state board has OEP A go out. They do not report to Dr. Marple. They report to the state board, just like you are a board. They hire that person who gets the team together to come out. So in May, there were some issues that they were concerned about, and they asked the team to come out and to do a brief, not a full-blown audit. They looked at all the schools and everything, but they had some concerns about personnel. I will just tell you, that was their concern. And the audit team came down and did some investigations, which they will do and can do because once you've been taking over as a county, or if you're not taking over, if they get issues that are out there in schools and counties, that's what they do. They don't listen to the rumors. They have someone go investigate it. So basically, they did that after the investigation. What the state board said was this, basically, there are two things they're going to do. They're gonna look at your agendas still, and they're going to look at your personnel actions when they come through. Those are the two things. Not gonna do any more in terms of anything else at this point. They could, in the future, send a team back in here to take a look. I think the main thing, they want things to go well here, just like you did. They have the same desire that you have as a board, but they also are gonna be, there are two things counties get in trouble about more than anything. They get in trouble on finances, and they get in trouble on personnel. And those are the two kind of hand-in-hand, and if those start going south in your system, your instruction gets hurt. And that's what we're about, really, ultimately. But those two things undergird the instruction. So basically, just let me draw a comparison a little bit. The state board hires Dr. Marple to run the State Department of Education, okay? She employs the people. Now, she talks to them, to her board, she informs them, but her responsibility is to do that and to make those recommendations to... Now, how can they, how do they work with her on that? They evaluate her every year. If she's not doing a good job in employment, or if she's not doing a good job with curriculum, that's where they nail that situation, okay? So basically, it's similar to what you do. Unless it's something real unusual, Superintendent Lucas has that responsibility, basically, to go out and find the best people to teach the kids or to work in the central office. Now, y'all have dialogue about them. There's nothing wrong with that. But she has the responsibility under law to make those recommendations to you all. And y'all know that, and I'll tell you something, you know, but it's similar to the state. If she does it well, she should get good evaluations. If she doesn't do it well, then, you know... So basically, that's the structure. And what our board is concerned about, and what they will watch very carefully, is that personnel matters are handled legally and the way they should be. And that's true in this county and any of the other counties in the state. So I was pleased that they didn't go any further. I was pleased that they said, "Let's, you know, let's just monitor this situation to make sure it goes well," and so that's what they're gonna do. I think you'll be fine. I just think you have to pull together, work together. I like this county. This is a good county. Good county that's, in my opinion, getting better and better, and will continue to get better under Superintendent Lucas's leadership. Any question about what the board did or didn't do, or any questions at all from you that...
Can I say, Ms. Lucas? I personally, speaking for myself, am not pleased with the way the state board handled the situation. I think they splattered us all over the news and put us in a bad light again over nothing. When they talked about someone trying to influence hirings, we have a right to, if we have a question on a hiring, we have a right to pull that until we can find out ourselves. Is this the right person? Is this who we need in that position? If we have questions about that person, and I did have questions about it, and I am the one who approached Ms. Lucas. And to me, they knew I was the one that approached her with concerns, but never once did I give her a name of anyone that I thought should have that position. I only asked her is to wait before you make your decision, review all the applications, accept the applications, review the applications, then make your decision. That's all I said. I never gave her a name of anybody, never tried to persuade her to go any certain direction. And to me, they knew that I'm one that went in to talk to her and one that agreed to have it pulled. And for Donna Davis, I think is her name, not to speak to me before that, before she put it before the state board, and then them to act and splash it out there on the news, again, just like Lincoln County gets another black eye, they were wrong. They were totally wrong.
That's your feeling. And you act as board sometimes, and people don't agree with you. You send make decisions, just like they do. So it's a similar type situation. You felt like you were in the right, you know?
And I would do it again.
Well, that is no problem, as long as it's done in a way that's, one, within the law, and, two, there isn't any personal requests, you know? Her job is to sort through. Her job is to look at all that before she brings it to you. Any superintendent's job is that way, and look at it carefully. And that would be, that would be my, and I'm sure she'll do that. And hopefully, by the time it gets to you, it's being carefully reviewed according to the law, because she's got to follow the law. That's the other side of it that's very important, that sometimes her hands are pretty tightly bound by the law too. So I think you have to be, we all have to be careful, but I think the board, in not going any further than they did, which I was pleased with, Carol, I think it was a...
And you read on the news, and you get these...
Well, that...
And I said, "Hey, that was me." And I don't care, tell it, it was me, and I'll do it again. If I feel that it needs to be done, I will do it again.
Well, and the board, when they, if they feel it is done right, they will not do anything because they're a board just like you. If they feel it's mishandled, or if it's something very political that's hurting kids, that's their bottom line, just like it's your bottom line, hopefully. If it's hurting kids, then they will step in and will not hesitate to take it over again if they believe it's the right thing to do in a given, in the overall situation. I don't want that. You don't want that. We want Lincoln County to move forward and do what they need to do. So basically, I just wanted to be sure, but you felt you were right...
There's twelve years to try. It's our time now.
Well, it's not about that. It's about the process that you're to use as a board and to work to better education for kids. That's what it's about. It's, you know... Okay, another question?
I don't have a question.
Oh, I thought...
I was just gonna say that.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, I think that the media a little bit caused a lot of people to be confused because some...
I heard that.
Reports said that we got taken over when we didn't.
I heard that.
And so there were, there were many, I think, misunderstandings, you know, as far as, you know, the public, even our own employees, you know, were confused. And, but I think that we will all be working very well together. And I just, I appreciate, you know, the people and the board, you know, and I'm looking forward for us, you know, to have a, you know... And there is nothing wrong with them coming and talking to me, you know? I expected to have much, you know, dialogue with them, but I also want to thank you for coming and speaking with them.
And I'll be working with Ms. Lucas. We have assigned mentors to each new superintendent. She happens to be a new superintendent, and so I will be down, and if there's any way that I can help the board or help her, I'll use any of the knowledge I have about the state, and sometimes it takes a little bit of knowledge to get what you need. I'll be glad to do that, so offer my assistance, and if I can help in any way, let me know.
And I thank you for coming also. But I had to get that off my chest.
I don't blame you. I don't have any, you know, you and I have been very...
I don't keep anything hidden. I mean, it's out there.
I think Dr. Martin has something she wants to say.
Yes, Jack, I'm trying to get my...
Yes, my name's Jack.
I don't know if you want to hear. I know you mentioned that it's okay to have dialogue with Ms. Lucas concerning important decisions.
Sure. Sure.
But I refer back to the report. I guess, you know, how do we split hairs here? And how do you define this? County boards and or individual members lack statutory authority to effect superintendent personnel recommendations directly or indirectly. Now, what exactly, how do you interpret that?
Well, I think when you have a, you have a right to talk to the superintendent about employment issues. As a board, to make decisions, of course, you have to come together collectively to vote to approve. But I think when you cross the line, if it gets down to those discussions, it says, "You need, you have to hire this person or that person." I think you give them, you know, she's to give you the reasons. "I'm going to bring this," if you ask her the question about a particular, "I'm going to bring this name, and these are the reasons." Now, if you're going to talk about it in depth in the group, you're going to have to go into executive session, and you can have those discussions. There's nothing wrong with those. She doesn't have to bring any appointment to you by law. She can, she can make her appointment. She can make her, and that's her job and her responsibility. And, but you have a right to have that dialogue with her. No one's questioning that as an individual board member, to say, "You know, this is the kind of person I want, we want, or I want." You know, I, no one, but then she has to sort through and say, "This is the person with those kinds of qualities that you've talked to me about that you want." Not that you want Joe, you know, John Doe necessarily. "I want a principal over here who has these qualities that can run this school." So it is, it is a very thin line. It is a very thin line. It isn't black and white. She has a right to actually put the name forward. You have a right to either approve it or disapprove it as a board.
And she did her explaining as to her reasons why, and I told her, "I will support your decision." But as far as going and talking to her about it, there was nothing wrong in that.
No, I mean, you, you have a right, and she has a right to call you. I'm, you know, I'm thinking about this, you know? There can't be any decisions made.
Right.
You know, here are the qualities I see. But she has a right then to come back and say, "This is the person that I really think I'm going to put forward for this job, and here's what..." You employ her, really, to do all those things for you, which is a great thing to have in all the issues. The issue about the fire department, she can do all the legwork for you, bring back recommendations to you, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's really a great position for you to be in, to have someone that you can rely on to do all those things and clean this slate. But you won't always agree. We all know that. State board doesn't always agree.
Maybe not.
No, no, no.
No, go ahead. I'll just...
I just, there's nothing that I've wanted more than for us to have local control. That's been one of my desires when I decided to run the Board of Education and all, and I thought we should have our, I just think local control works best, although I realize there are times when things happen, you lose that maybe. But, and we've had this discussion many times, that having been an administrator myself, you know, I've kind of sat on both sides of the fence there, and that, that we need to make sure that we do our, we set policy, like you say. We establish what we want. We employ the superintendent we think best suits what we want. And then it's up to that person to fulfill that. And then when we do our annual evaluations, you know, if we think there are needs, we'll share those with Ms. Lucas, and, you know, there may not be any, but anyway, that's the way the system works. But the day-to-day operations are administrative, and that's the way they should be. Now, referring back to the report, I know when I first read it, and I know the issue that Carol was talking about there, and I understand that, but they also, there were also allegations of some other things that weren't regarding that particular incident of hiring the assistant superintendent or the principal of that matter. Some other allegations were made that supposedly were substantiated. So I think the defense of OPEA, and, you know, just from what I read there, those things are true. You know, we have to understand that they made their decision, the recommendation to the State Board based upon more than just that one incident that Carol first did. But, and I just, you know, hope that we will do what we're supposed to do, and we'll let the administrative people do what they're supposed to do, and working in the unison that we'll be able to accomplish what we want, maintain local control, and improve our schools.
I think you will. I've got confidence you will. I, you know, and, yeah, there were some other things in the report, and I think that's, Ms. Lucas is charged to make sure some of those things get corrected. You have some of those sometimes. It's, you can't be perfect. You know that, so...
I'd like to say one other thing, if it's okay.
Is it interesting?
Are you finished?
Yes.
We've had, I mean, the state has been overlooking us as far, as far as our personnel. And if there were problems in our personnel, I just wonder why they didn't bring that to our attention before. And we use Rebecca Tender a lot. I mean, our bill with her is tremendous. And we check just about everything that is done through her. And if we're still doing something wrong, why can't the State Board, they know what we're doing wrong, why can't they send somebody down here on their dime instead of, instead of on our children's dime, and show us just exactly what we're doing wrong and say, "Here, let's fix it right up front," rather than us keep with the attorneys and running these extreme bills up like that? Couldn't they send somebody?
Because they have two reasons for that. One is they have six counties now that they are, and no longer have you all, that they work with and do give a certain amount of legal advice to. There's only two attorneys in the whole office, and as you well know, you can keep one pretty busy sometimes in one or two counties. So that's, that's kind of the reason. The other thing, and I agree with you, sometimes it's process, it's procedures. I think the other things pretty much were processes and procedures that weren't handled, and, and they can get away from you sometimes, and we were talking about that before the meeting. And I said, "Just be careful, make sure we check those off," you know? Over the last year or so, you all, most of the decisions have been made of, you know, been made by the superintendent, working with you all. It wasn't in isolation. So it's, the last year and a half or so, it's been pretty, you know, you all knew what was going on, you were pretty much in agreement. Now, it's been turned over to you guys, though, now, which is, but that's the reason, basically. Those were procedure things I think we can get corrected pretty quickly.
Is it a problem or customary for the board to know who applied for these positions?
Well...
Before they appear on the agenda, he voted on?
Well, you can, you can ask. You can ask the superintendent, particularly if there's particular...
But is nothing wrong with the...
No, of course, nothing wrong, nothing wrong. The only time you, when you cross the line is when it gets into, you want somebody particular for a particular position. It's what it gets into, that's when you cross the line. Knowing the names, you know, her job is to sort through all those things and say, "Given the law, these people are eligible?" Here's my thing. You do all that in closed doors because you're talking about an individual, you know? I mean, if you really want to have those kinds of discussions. So, you know, knowing about them, no, there's no problem if it's, you know, if you make it public knowledge, "I got them all in here, and the board wants to know." You can set up any procedures you want to set up with her to make sure you do know. But got to be careful. It's that thin line that you talked about. When you cross it, it's when the rumors start to flow in the county, and when they get back up to Charleston, which they will, then that's when the, somebody comes along and says, "Wait a minute, this has crossed the line, and we're back to doing some things we shouldn't be doing." So that's, it's a very thin line. You're right, it's, I like our line at the State Department much more. The superintendent makes the recommendations and the employment for her stat. It's a little different county, just air different. You ultimately approve them, but really, it should be almost procedural unless the person's not making real good decisions as superintendent, and that's why you have your evaluation process. And that's how you have, so, okay?
I have one question.
Yeah.
And I, hopefully, you've already answered your remarks there. The one issue in the memorandum of understanding that was in limbo was curriculum, that had, we'd not had any of these other issues, and we'd been perfect in personnel, then the only issue really that was out, that would still be decided was in curriculum. And that really wasn't addressed in the report, or we heard anything. Based on what you're saying, I hope that we have control of curriculum now, but that's never been communicated to us.
You have full control. I don't think there's any hope, there's anything being held back at all, from what I understood.
Well, that's why, I understand what you're saying. That wasn't communicated to us, or hasn't been, unless something's happened.
I was, before Mr. Rogge's letter, I think, I don't know, I think we've had some discussions here, but I think there was going to be an audit for curriculum, and I thought it was going to be, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I missed...
They've talked about there being, that there may be, they can come back in the time when you're under state, just after it's given back. They can come back at any time and audit. They audit any county at any given time. But no, I think everything is being given back. I'll check just to be sure and then communicate back to your superintendent.
Well, that was, that was one of the, I think that was a question that I'd asked, and I think that was something that he actually addressed with us. At the beginning of the year, basically, the school year, that we were going to have another, an audit for curriculum. And I think that that, and that was my understanding from Mr. Rogge.
He did say that, but he said that was his understanding, so he hadn't confirmed it.
I think there were some things they wanted to, and people fear audits, but really, they give you some feedback on what you can do. Really, there's nothing wrong with, with, you know, going in, taking a look, and feeding back to the superintendent or board, "Here's some things you can approve of." It isn't always a takeover, most time it isn't a takeover situation, so it's not anything to be feared, really.
Just one more point here. I know, Jack, that you couldn't write the OPEA report.
No.
And I find it a little confusing. They mentioned member and members, and two members and one member, and I don't know who did what, or if anybody did anything, just to be honest. But I think that, I'm not sure that we really think we did a lot wrong or did anything wrong. I don't know. I'm, I can just speak for me, okay? I don't think I did anything wrong here, okay? But if I did, I would appreciate someone telling me that I did something wrong, what it was, and what I can do to correct it. I think some of this is too general, and these are just my feelings on it. And I think that perhaps if they interpreted what I read a few months ago to affect superintendent personnel recommendations directly or indirectly, what exactly does that mean? Now, you clarified some of it, and there's a fine line. You can talk in generalities, but if I go to her and say, "Now, I want you to hire him for this position," is that wrong?
That's wrong.
That's wrong.
That's wrong.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's when you get real down to saying, "I want you to hire so-and-so, you know, for this position," and it gets, that crosses lines. But...
But you see, even, you said we can have dialogue, but you see what I'm saying?
Well, you can have, I mean, I think you have a right to know what the superintendent's thinking about employing a particular person for a critical job at the central office at a school as a principal. I mean, the teaching positions are pretty tightly, those are all tightly controlled. Principals are pretty tightly controlled. She may have to do something because of the law. She needs to convey to you all, basically. So it's, you have a right to know, "She's bringing this name forward. Here's the reason I'm bringing it." Now, something, it may be something can be public, it may be something can't be public. So you have to be able to have some dialogue. But she'll know when you've crossed the line, and you'll know when you've crossed. We all know that. We all know that, where that line is, and sometimes it gets a little fuzzy, but, you know, we know. And she'll have to be one of the people and say, "Look, you know, I'm going to have to make this recommendation." And she'll have to make the one thing that's best for the kids of this county. You don't have to decide whether or not you're going to approve.
Could you enlighten us concerning any additional trainings that we might partake of with Mr. Recoge, which we have spent hours with Mr. Recoge, who I dearly love, by the way, and, and about a letter about the severity of interfering personnel issues?
I think, I think you'll get a letter from probably the, probably the State Board after the meeting, that will follow up on that meeting, and in fact, I know you will, to indicate, now, how specific that will be, I don't know. I'd have to see it once it's written. But as far as training, I think you all, I don't know how much training the new members have had, but I know Carol's had probably enough, and you probably have had enough. So I don't know that that, right now, now it's a matter of just executing, doing it the right way. And I think you will. I really, truly, I, I, I just got a feeling that this is going to go well, so we'll see. I started with saying the board doesn't want to take Lincoln County back over. I can tell you that for a fact. They want you to get, they, we want you to be, want us to be, and I think it will.
But I'm like Carol, I feel like sometimes our board is sort of maligned here, you know?
Yeah, we're not always perfect, though, when, you know, when you get into these kind of situations. So everybody makes mistakes. Y'all make some, they'll make some, I'll make some. Superintendent, it's a flip-flop. So we'll, hopefully, they'll be small enough that we will move on. Okay? I've taken enough of your time. Thank you for having me.
I appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
I do appreciate you.
Okay?
Thank you again.
If you did something wrong, if you did something wrong, Carol, that's...
I'll talk to you.
I don't want you to tell me what I'm doing.
Very satisfied.
We're going to be all right.
Let's go to the administrative section. And, Ms. Lucas, would you go ahead and take the administrative section, just go through that word list, please?
A, we are postponing until late May.
August 7th.
August 7th. B, to approve a professional service, if agreement was done, we resort to provide lodging, dining, and conference services on August 7th through the 9th, 2011, for Gayan Valley Middle School professional staff. This is going to be funded through the school improvement grant that comes under. It's not the title one, it's the school improvement grant. C, an agreement with the Office of the State Auditor to provide a review of the internal controls related to transactions of the county's purchasing cards program for the financial statements of the Lincoln County Board of Education as of June 3rd, 2011. There's no fee for that. D, a contractual service agreement with Grindamagin and Associates to provide physical therapy services to eligible students for the 2011-12 school year as provided for in the contract, and this is paid from the special education funds, and this is something that we have been doing yearly for several years. E, an agreement with developmental therapy services to provide occupational, physical, and speech therapy services to eligible students for the 2011-12 school year as provided for in the contract. That is also paid from the special education funds. F, adoption of the substitutes in areas of critical need and shortage policy as required by West Virginia Code 18A-2-3 and 18-7A-38. And so we have to do this year. G, to award a bid to snack time vending company for the 2011-12 school year for sale snacks, meeting state nutrition guidelines, with no price inflations from the previous year. The commission rate is for item range from 21 cents to 35 cents. That's for us. H, toward a bid to coat for the 2011-2012 school year for the sale of water and soda. Commission rate is 55 percent. I, out of state travel for the following employees, Diane Miller and Angela Pritchard to Washington, DC, to attend the reception for Happy Year US Schools Challenge, which was a personal invitation from Mrs. Obama. I couldn't go. So I'm sad about that.
I had a feeling, just, you know, I noticed in the Herald Dispatch about the time that we've had to do this...
we had to do a ceremony in the school that had the awards, the all the awards and this type thing, that one of their schools had gotten something, a silver award or something. I mean, they had, had like a forty page and everything, and then when they, they talked about ours, it was in a little, and I cut them out, I wanted to compare them, a little piece about this big. I just wondered if we could get some more coverage from the Herald Dispatch, I mean, this is like state in size, I mean, this is a big deal.
It's huge.
Our schools were really honored and did a lot of work, and Miss Miller and the whole nutrition program. I just wish that we could get more coverage, I know, the Journal covered it, but I mean, I'd like to see the Dispatch. I'd like to see something good one time. We did, but we do great things, but we don't get much coverage sometimes.
Well, I think it says along there, you have two people coming up to me. Sure.
And they did announce that at the superintendent's conference, that Lincoln County was getting a personal invitation to come to the White House, and they talked about that, I want to say extensively, but somewhat, at the state superintendent's conference, so, and we will be talking more about us being involved in the pilot program for our, all their students being able to eat free, but that will, we're gonna have a lot more information on that. So, and you probably heard that on the news, but we're getting more information regarding that. Sandy and Mrs. Miller and I were on a conference call just the other day, and they were giving us some specifics, and we'll be able to share that soon.
I guess, could we, could we somehow drum up some more PR for that? I mean, I don't know if we have any contacts to pay for it. I don't know, I'd call them. I'll do a call, I don't care. We'll, we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
They can call them and ask them to contact you.
Yeah, I mean, I don't...
Actually, if I could just read the journal, I could get a mark from there, I'm proud of it.
Yeah, I mean, the superintendent, I had more...
There you go, thank you very much, Sean, for, appreciate you and your coverage.
I think superintendent can have more impact than any call, as a board member, faculty personnel, or private individual, whatever.
I will, I will see if I can have some contacts.
I just wanted to ask a question about a effort, something, and I can do that today.
Oh, well, you can go, and it's me.
Well, I'm just reading here, I want to clarify this. We have some retired teachers that end up taking regular positions, see I have here, right?
Yes.
But I know it's just when retired teachers employ a substitute, they'll make a position, the county board should continue to post the vacant position to a filled area, really. Now, somewhere over on the previous page, or somewhere around that red here, that a person should not be employed who's retired, I guess that's what that person is, if there is a certified teacher available.
Right.
So if there is any certified, I would say, an elementary certi- certified teacher out there, that they would have preference over someone who's retired who's going to have a vacant position?
Yes.
I mean, are there any exceptions to that?
There might, um, if they're not in, when you said elementary...
I just use as an example.
Well, I was gonna say, let's say we have a math position, that's usually what happens. We might have a math position, we may have some certified teachers, but they are not certified in math, but we may have a retired teacher that's certified. Where are we going? Take the retired person of, you know, just a juvenile substitute.
I can understand that because of their special, their speciality, but that's the reason I used elementary as an example, because you're probably more apt to have some certified teachers that are employed, and I know at times we employ people who are retired, and I'm just trying to clarify that that...
I just want to make sure that there aren't any reasons such as bad evaluation, or anything like that.
So that would be the only thing standing in the way?
Could be, that, I want to say that might be one of the things that would be a reason that we would not hire someone other than, on a daily basis, to be in charge of a classroom for a long period of time.
Of course, the process is here, to continue to post the vacant position to this field with regular former teacher, who, who are retired teachers, who is a substitute for a vacant position.
And sometimes what happens is that after school is started, we may post a position, and a regular employee bids on that position, but they can't move until the next year. So we may place a substitute, and that happens in elementary, we may place a retired teacher in that position for the remainder of the year.
Is it a year or semester or...
If, if they've already been hired, I mean, if a teacher has been hired and they can't move until the next year, because it's not semester anymore.
Okay, two years and...
Yes, yeah, it's changed. And so we would keep them there. So then we would not have to continue to post, because we actually have someone hired for the next year.
I think that's where the official appears to, whenever you have their routine, you have that same person, and you're staying with them instead of that person living in the semester, especially for elementary, I mean, it's a conversation, it's not, you can't, you can't, you know, so...
Five, five instruction, the days prior to, or, five days prior to the instruction and, it's what the law says.
Do, do you think we should just call the J?
Yeah. I don't know. I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, and before, J, I don't think it's necessary, I wouldn't think so, it was already acted upon in May, and interlude to the limits, we've proved them to minutes the next board meeting, so it's already been proven. So I'll make a motion, and before J.
I second the motion. All those in favor of the poll, item J from the administrative section, please say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Now, I'd like to make a, a motion that we table item A until August the second.
I second.
All those in favor to table item A of the administrative section, please say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Now, I'll make a motion that we approve, that we approve B through I of the administrative section.
Second.
All those in favor to approve B through I of the administrative section, please say aye. All opposed, the ayes have. Motion carries. Let's go to Bonix, Brittany Gannon.
Okay, Brittany, did you get the money from that? Okay, there was a, there was a corrected copy of the bills to be approved, um, on the office, when those numbers got sent here and had a pool of compliance. So, the bills to be approved is one million, two nineteen, five fifty-eight, fifty-four. Any questions here, if we have any questions on any items?
Item B is county pensions. Gilmar A. Deldecas is entitled to retirement under option B. He taught in Lincoln County for twenty-five years and retired from Lincoln. Roger Wade, option A, he taught for twenty, he worked for twenty-six point nine years. And item C, to award a bid to Charis for fiscal year twelve workers comp recovery at a cost of two hundred ninety-five thousand four nine.
All right, I'll make a motion that, that we approve PO number one-two-zero-zero-two-three, and make, and make a note that Dr. Martin must recuse herself from this item.
I reached the list. It's Lincoln Agency, oh, God, that's not...
I have a similar question, yeah. All those in favor to approve the PO number, please say aye.
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 I'll stay.
And Dr. Martin abstained, all opposed, the ayes have, motion carries. I'll make a motion that we approve all other items on the attachment for the schedule of annual business.
I see.
All those in favor to approve all other items in the financial section, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have, motion carries. And let's go to personnel schedule. I think we have a, a new personnel schedule. Have you all had a chance to read the personnel schedule? Do you all have any questions regarding the personnel schedule?
I have, I have one, employment of service personnel, Phyllis Miller. I know she has retired, and could you explain to me just exactly what she will be doing?
Yes, she will be coming back to train the, her replacement on how to enter the Medicaid billing, that is a complicated process, and she's the only one that has been doing that in this county for a number of years, and we don't have anyone else that would be able to sit down. So, there are many ti- or periods throughout the year that there are, I want to say, some, an influx from the teachers and the speech therapists, and, you know, the people that are allowed to bill for Medicaid, and she would be there to help or show the person how to do that.
Who is her replacement? Is it on here?
Uh, yes, let's see who it is.
I'm B two.
B two.
Okay. Do you find it carries? So she will be working with, with the Catholic?
Yes, yes.
And it said not to exceed forty days, will it actually take forty days to train her?
I, it, I don't know, I can't honestly answer that, but we did, with nurses...
But if it takes less, we can.
Yes, absolutely. But we did meet with the nurses and Mr. Roach, Dana Snyder, and Phyllis, you know, trying to come up with what we thought might be a reasonable, but as she said, it may not take that many days, but, and they will start billing actually, you know, just as soon as this person starts the new job.
Is it out of, ordinary for me to ask how much do we pay her to train?
Whatever was on the job description.
I don't remember, see, one fifty, or service trainer, one fifty.
A half per day. That was, yes, you guys got that to approve the, yeah, job description.
Hopefully it doesn't take forty days to train.
Right.
Maybe, that's quite a long time.
Now, this is for just this year.
Just for this year.
This is not reoccurring tonight, so it should end in June, in two thousand twelve.
Yes, yes, yes. Plus, she will be helping, you know, the nurses have a lot of different things to get ready prior, for school to start, especially for children that have specialized health care needs, and, and Phyllis is very familiar with getting those things together, and so she will be assisting this new person on how to get those things together as well, so that those children have those services in place day one.
Does anybody else have any, any other questions regarding the personnel schedule? All right, we have a motion, all right? We have a motion second. All those in favor to approve the personnel schedule, that's A through G, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay. Board comments concerned, and just wanted to find out, no one put your side on which this, have you heard anything about this?
I'll just say, I, have you heard anything regarding that?
No, I know the marble is ordered, and I believe they told Mr. Roach it would be six weeks before it would be ready. It takes that long to do whatever it is you do, marble, to secure it and whatever. I guess the bricks are ready to be delivered, but it's hard to have them delivered to a secure place, but since it was going to take so long to the marble, we didn't, in a hurry to get those, but there's nothing really happening, but we have to wait for that marble to be ready and shipped out, and then it can move. It won't be ready. We have volunteers that would want, of course, do the major work on the bricks.
Two quick questions. The report from last week said at the end that monthly agendas and employment decisions would be going to Charleston, I guess. Did today's agenda go to Charleston before the meeting, or is this information going to go to Charleston after the meeting?
It goes after.
After the meeting.
After, because it's after these, after the board makes their decisions.
Okay.
And proves everything.
And secondly, I, you know, I know this is recording, and I know, I know from reading the report that they, they watch what we write, and they watch what we record. He seems to think you all have full control as of last December. We never reported that, and I don't think a lot of the board members understood that. And my final question to Mr. Roach in his final meeting was, when does the board get curriculum and instruction back? And like Carol said, he gave me some kind of an answer. So, are we to take it that the Lincoln County Board has full control now with some element of oversight?
I don't, I mean, just from the conversation, I think that we all understood with Mr. Roach, I don't think that it has been decided that we have curriculum and instruction. I don't think that has been decided, and I think that's one of the things that Mr. Roach emphasized, and he said that they were going to come back, and that's one of the things that I was kind of addressing to you all. But, you know, I think we need clarification on that, and I think that's what Miss Lucas could do.
I think Dr. McClain said he would get some clarification and, and send that to me.
And you know, Sean, they may give you an answer quicker than they will the board.
Well, we worked, we worked hard last week trying to figure out what they were thinking, and I'm still not sure we know.
Well, we know it's conditional accreditation status, whatever.
Whatever that, whatever that is.
And, you know...
Well, things are gonna be, just move on, and, I mean, I'm, I'm very satisfied with the education my children are receiving, and I think there's a lot of people that feel the same way that I do, and we're moving forward. I think we have excellent teachers, we have excellent administrators, and I think we have excellent service personnel. Things are, things are fine, things are looking good. Do you all have anything else?
I have one thing. We got it, Mr. Fields, of course, there's a, sound like an optimist, a good update on the Hart's pre-case court, that sounds great. Hopefully, that they will come, have all of that taken care of, but it remains one property issue up there in Limbo. I hate to mention it, but it's still there.
It's gonna cost us money.
Well, and obviously it is, because, well, I assume that it is based upon the precedent that's established with the other pieces of property. I'd like for the board to consider, and I think we've kind of tossed this around before, that we make Dr. Ranne Vega, I don't know whether I mispronounced his name or not, but I would like for us, for you all to consider this, for us to direct, Miss Lucas, superintendent, to direct our legal counsel to formally make an offer to Dr. Ranne Vega of ninety thousand dollars plus any applicable interest to date for his property at Hart's Hospital. Now, the reason I say that is because the information that's been provided by the surveyors showed that there's one usable acre there. And I know the total acreage is two something, I don't remember the exact amount, but on all the other pieces of property, well, except in the DeGus, it's a little bit, it's another factor, but it seems that ninety thousand dollars is the going rate for property there, for usable...